I'd like to call the May 3, 2018, meeting of the Middletown School Board to order. The first item of business is a proposed hearing on the 2018-2019 annual budget. Then we have a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Knapp. Roll call, Mrs. Clark.
Ms. Knapp, here. Ms. Snack, here. Ms. Knapp? Here.
Here.
Ms. Snack? Here.
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 Thank you very much, Ms. Clark. Mr. Tuttle, would you like to present a final presentation of the 2018-2019 budget?
President Prino, members of the board. Tonight, we have the legally required public hearing. This is our final presentation of the already approved by the Board of Education budget. And just one note up there, the budget vote is on Tuesday, May 15. So as I discussed a little bit earlier, according to New York state law, we're required to have a public hearing no less than seven days or 14 days prior to the budget vote. And we need to present the budget in three formats: an administrative, a program, and a capital. And this is why the Board of Education has their input. Through the whole process, we have a public session where the community can come up and present their concerns about the budget. So if we recap the process, we actually started back in December. Jeff Smith, our financial advisor, came in and spoke to us about our three-year plan. Then through the month of February, March, April, and here we are in May, we've had quite a few budget presentations. All those meetings are available on Midi TV, and all the presentations are up on our website under the community link, and then tax and budget. You can find all the presentations there, as well as the board minutes. So one of the components is administrative. First, I'd like to point out, all the board members at their table have received the budget news. This will be going out in your mailboxes to the community tomorrow. Over the next couple of days, you'll receive it. This, what I'm presenting tonight, is just taking a snapshot of what's in this brochure and just presenting it tonight. So we have the administrative portion, which is an increase of 7.71 percent this year. This is all the Board of Education functions, tax collector. You can read most of the list up there. Basically, the administrative functions for the whole district. That both sees administrative charges, our insurance costs, what it costs for research and planning. And these dollar amounts here are without benefits. So in the, what we do a little bit different, we actually have the fourth component, is our benefits component. So our proposed program this year is up 5.36 percent. This has everything to do with student instruction, essentially anywhere from staff down to contract transportation, our psychological services, health services, computer services, and all our special schools that we have, including summer school, things like that. Has the super courses in there, and again, that's up 5.36 percent. Our proposed capital this year is up 18.55. Over the past month, we've been talking about why this is dramatically increased. And I'll show you on the next slide, we're putting some money into our infrastructure out of the fund balance. So if you see under the transfer to food service and capital, it's quite a significant number, over $4 million. That's what's causing the 18.55 percent increase there. Under the other capital components, we have our debt service. We also have our operations and maintenance functions, custodians, cleaners, buildings and grounds. And then the second line down, we also have the school resource officers. That is new for the budget this year. And that would be a resource officer for every school. So then the fourth component is our proposed benefits. This is our health insurance and all of our, for our state employees' retirement, our teachers' retirement fund, social security, workers' comp. Anything that has to do with benefits for an employee is under this program. And that's actually, we're seeing a decrease of a little bit over 3 percent this year, primarily because we're using some of our reserves to offset some of our payments. And our health plan seems to really be thriving, and we're able to sustain some savings there. So over the past two years, we're over right around $4.5 million in savings in our health plan since going self-funded. So hopefully, we'll continue to see savings there. So our summary, in the end, our total increase is 5.82 percent, up over just about $10, $10.5 million from last year's budget. But in there, you know, we have the capital projects that we talked about. That's what's driving the increase. And then the SROs are on there. And then we also have some of the other things we talked about, was adding new staff for psychological services, new bus routes, things like that. So we talked about those in two different, a couple of different meetings now, and this is just recapitulating what we've already discussed. So our proposed budget for this year is $189,966,196. Our budget increase is 5.82 percent. Our tax levy this year is 1.87 under the 2 percent tax cap. And I'll show you a little bit how we were able to do that with reserves and fund balance. So our tax cap levy, we're 1.87 percent, is almost $75,878,805. And that increase from last year is $1,395,057. This is our tax cap calculation, something we have to do in February to determine what our actual maximum allowable tax levy could be. If you see the top number, that's $76,518,805. What we're proposing is $640,000 less than the actual allowable tax levy. Because our, under the tax cap is negative, we need 50-plus-one votes to pass the budget. If our tax cap was a positive, we would need 60 percent of the vote. What we talked about a little bit are capital improvements. We talked about this in several meetings. One of them is resurfacing the track, replacing the video board, replace the turf on the field, and then renovating the library and the high school. This will be actually zero cost at our property owners, we're using fund balance to pay for these, and then when we submit the projects, we'll receive state aid on this money as well. So back in 2008, '09 is when the new track stadium came online. We kind of figured in 10 years or so, we would need to replace some of the turf and the track and some of those things. We did discuss a few meetings ago, really over since the inception of holding state meets and regional events, it's estimated over $10 million revenue to the community. That's for hotels, restaurants, gas, things of that nature. So it is very economically rewarding for the community if they could choose to support this type of budget. So here's what we're doing using reserves and fund balance. We talked about the capital projects, a little over $4 million there. We're using the unappropriated fund balance, $5,799,227 to lower the taxes. We're using workers' comp reserve and the employer retirement reserve. So this year, we're almost at $11 million of using reserve and fund balances to help offset the tax levy. Okay. If we had to go to a contingent budget, what is that? If the first budget doesn't pass two times, we can, we need to go back to last year's levy. And then with that, what actually happens is, we would need to cut $5.5 million. Majority of that would be the capital fund, because if you look down what law mandates, there's no equipment purchases, there's no capital projects or anything. The only thing that we could really fund for capital projects or equipment would be smart schools, computer hardware purchases, because those are state aid. There's no salary increases for those employees outside of bargaining units, and all facilities would be charged a fee. So if the Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts wanted to come in, rent the gymnasium, they would be charged a fee. Any other recreational programs, et cetera, would be charged. Hopefully, we don't have to do the contingent. Some of the frequently asked questions. You know, the Board of Education, you know, through all of our communication, our financial advisors, know that we need a 4 percent limit on our fund balance. But if you look at all the schools that are in peril financially, it's because they have zero money in their fund balance. And they do the control system and fiscal stress. As you know, our last report, we are not in fiscal stress. So that's a good thing for our district. And why that's good for us is the Moody's ratings give us a big A, small a, three rating, which is one of the highest ratings for bonds. So we're able to borrow a significant amount of money at a very low premium, which is very hard to do. So we're able to leverage the fund balance. Because when they look at selling bonds, they actually have interviews with the district, and they're trying to figure out, and they look at all your financial documents, they want to make sure you're solvent and can manage your money well. The current estimated fund balance for June 30, after funding legal and appropriate reserves will be about two years' worth of the current annual fund balance contribution. Basically, putting, you know, aside money for the reserves in case the economy goes bad. It's an election year coming up, so we're not sure what's going to happen next year. So it's good to have reserves for those rainy days. And a reminder that the budget vote is on Tuesday, May 15. If you need to register for voting, please call Taren, 326-1196. If you need to know where to vote, it's online. You can find out what polling place you would go to. It's up on our website. Okay. Two things I just want to mention. I did mention the budget news will be delivered in the mailboxes at homes soon. That basically outlines where our budget is, talks about our programs, and basically announces our budget notice, okay? And then the other thing that's available in the district clerk office and online is our master budget document that shows all our account codes and all the things that are mandated by the state that we need to have in a budget binder. All board members have one of those as well. And that was distributed, I think, the other day, Monday or Sunday. Okay? Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
Okay.
Now we'll take public comments on this budget. Who would like to comment? Anyone?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Well, we've had, we've gone over this three or four times, but yes.
Okay, never mind.
Go ahead.
Where, what is the date that is the last date to register if they're not registered?
Tuesday is the last date.
Okay, it's past Tuesday.
Past Tuesday. Oh, so there's, okay. So then you really can't register people now to vote.
Okay.
I don't think we discussed that. And when I'm being asked questions, is there approximate amount that I can say with this, I mean, this is a good budget, but that I can say how much it would increase a person's taxes?
I don't know that.
We don't know that yet, right?
I can't, because the equalization rates would differ. And each year, a different town or municipality could be reevaluated. I wouldn't want to say a number and then.
Well, I just want to emphasize that. That we can't say it's $50 increase for a house assessed at whatever.
We don't usually get that information till August or September, unfortunately. But if you are new to the community, make sure you're, or have purchased a home, make sure your STAR application is in. They'll refund there, they'll help lower your taxes.
Okay, that's all I had.
Any other comments? I'd like a motion to adjourn the annual budgetary.
It's moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Let's go right into the regular meeting. Pastor Williams, would you like to lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please remain standing for a moment of silence? I apologize.
John, you need your microphone.
This moment of silence is for Mr. Daniel Snyder. Mr. Snyder, a longtime contractor with Mid-City Transit for the Middletown School District, owner and operator of Mid-City Transit. Mr. Snyder was a Middletown High School graduate, extremely active in the community. He was on the board of the Salvation Army for many, many years. He served in our local fire company, the Ontario Hose Company, and he was also chief of department. Additionally, Mr. Snyder was a very prominent and active member of the Middletown Kiwanis Club. He also serves his country and the Army Reserves. And, you know, for the district, Mr. Snyder, as does Dan Higbee today, they do, he did a lot of pro bono work, in other words, supplying buses for students at no charge. So please remember, Mr. Snyder, in your thoughts and prayers, he will be missed in Thank you very much. Mrs. Blumenau, would you like to read the mission?
We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continually, continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Blumenau.
You're welcome.
Let's have a roll call. Here.
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the regular minutes of the April 19, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we come to a very pleasant part of the meeting, recognitions and announcements, and we have very special recognitions this evening. And let me start by saying that we were all invited to a fashion show at MHS. And I opened the brochure, which I have, and I saw special thanks to our sponsors, Folas Men Shop and Temple Sinai. And I had the pleasure at that meeting of meeting Mr. and Mrs. Blumfield, Josephine and Edward Blumfield. And they have done so much for our students. They facilitated the fashion show, and they also facilitated and coordinated an extravaganza at Temple Sinai, supplying prom and dress suits and dresses and prom suits. So I'd like you to come on up to the podium, and if you'd like to say a few words, because you've been doing this for a number of years now, and I tell you, we should have invited you before. So come on up, and we'll, we can come right up with you.
Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. In the first place, I have never had the pleasure more of chewing gum in school. In the second place, I enjoyed sitting here behind people, because usually I can't see a thing going on because of my height, and the podium is just about the right size. I just want you, everybody, to know how my wife and I and Linda enjoyed putting together an event where we got 132 children, either a dress or a suit, accessories and whatever else they needed, so that they could go to the prom. And that makes us feel wonderful, and we really, really, really enjoy it. We enjoyed being here at your fashion show, and we saw some of the fashions you had, and it looked very well on the kids, and we wanted, we enjoyed that, too. And in closing, I just wanted to, before I know I'm talking a lot, since I wanted to say that looking at your budget was a little like, my wife and I discussing my son's allowance. So everybody have a good evening.
Mr. Perino, do you want to say a few words?
Um, no, that's okay. My husband says that a lot.
You know, I guess the term, Mr. Brownstone, as my tutor is, I guess the term is, you've been doing mitzvahs. Is that the?
Perfect.
The correct word?
Yes, very, very, very well said.
But it's wonderful what you have been doing, and I know you're going to continue this.
Yes.
And we thank you so much and appreciate you. We have a certificate, community service, and we also have one for you. And we also have a certificate for the photographer who contributes, Teresa Nolan. Could you see that she gets us? She couldn't be with us this evening. And now we'd like you to step up and take some photos. Mr. Witt is going to get some photos.
You see, my mom told me, a long time ago, that if you can find some blue in the sky and cut a pair of man's pants out, it won't last long. So when we were coming in, I said to Vince, "There's blue sky out there."
Two other very special recognitions this evening. We have in the audience Sue DePue and her daughter. And what Sue does, every year, she coordinates the city, Middletown City Cleanup. And she involves a number of our students in this cleanup. This year, if my memory serves me correct, we had NJOTC, we had members of the Honor Society, the High School Honor Society, and we had members of the Presidential Park Elementary Honor Society, and the Maple Hill Honor Society, and the Carter Honor Society. Among those, a football team was there, Mayor's Youth Council, Middletown Cares, on and on. But you do a remarkable job. You assign our students to a very appropriate locations, and it runs like clockwork. So Sue, if you'd like to come up to the microphone and say a couple of words, we'd appreciate,
Thank you, Mr. Prino and members of the board. It is a pleasure to speak with you. In 2011, on my way home from work one night, I got the idea to clean up Middletown when I was hit in the front of my car with two slices of pizza from the car ahead of me. I beeped at them, and then they threw the box. And when I got home to my husband and told him what had happened, he said, "Well, let's do something about it." And so I got up at a Middletown Common Council meeting about a week later, and I had an idea to clean up Middletown. I had no idea what was ahead of me, except that I was not going to live like that anymore. So I said that I would clean up one of the quarter of the Middletown. I live in the second ward, I live by the YMCA. And so I got my friends and a couple of council people together, and we bought t-shirts, large enough to fit almost anyone, and bright enough so it would be recognized. And my husband and I bought the shirts and grabbers, and we met at Watts Park, and we began to clean up Middletown on a rainy day in March of 2011. We cleaned up about 45 garbage bags of litter in the second ward. And I reported a few days later back at Middletown Common Council at the success, and I was greeted with, "Would you take on the whole city?" And the answer was, "Of course I would, but everybody better participate." So for eight years, I've been doing this, and I am passionate about cleaning up Middletown. I had had one instance where I tried to come into the school district, but it wasn't the right combination, without going into details. I hope now that you see that I'm an older lady who really still wants to clean up Middletown. Maybe we can do something with the children of the school district on a different level. It is my passion to live in a city where everyone is proud of all the streets in Middletown. So I'm going to give this shirt to, I know Mr. Prino has one, I'm going to give it to the person who might like this the best. Mr. Tuttle?
So now you're going to be in competition with John.
Yeah, I think it's nice.
We'll give it to you, Pastor.
Our last cleanup was on the 21st, Earth Day, and we try to select Earth Day weekend as the weekend that we do this, and it seems to work out great. Unfortunately, many of the students that usually participated were involved in makeup athletic events. And Chris Brinkerhoff and Dave Coats have been amazing helpers for our endeavor. And I can't thank you enough for inviting me here, and I hope that we can help Middletown become clean with all the kids involved. Thank you very much.[1707.48][1707.48](applause)
I know with your organizational skills, Sue, you're going to accomplish that, we're going to accomplish that. So why don't we get a photo of everyone? Anyone wants to come up? Come on up. you know, there's some wonderful poetry being written in February." About a week or so ago, one of my colleagues, Keisha Zucks, approached me and said, "Chee, you know, there's some wonderful poetry being written in February, Black History Month, and could we not invite some of the participants to come to our meeting?" I said, "Sure, I think that would be wonderful." So, Keisha, you want to take it from here?
Thank you. President Perino, Mr. Perino, I wanted to thank everyone for this time. And I definitely want to thank Ms. Charles, Tamika Charles, our PTO president there at the high school. And I want to thank our principal there at the high school for allowing this. I want to thank one of the best teachers who went out of her way and did everything right to start this. It has been something that has been in the making for a while. And I know that this is not the end. And when I went to this event, I was amazed and taken back by the students. And I just wanted to make sure that we presented them in front of everyone. And so, this is not just something that was done and that was it. I wanted to make sure that we could, this is going to, it's now on TV and you can play it back and you can hear yourself again and again, because I was stunned by what I was listening to. So, Ms. Tamika Charles, if you could take over from here.
Okay, good evening. I'm Ms. Robinson Monroe. And it's moments like this as a teacher that really remind you of why you do what you do. So, again, we're very thankful for the support and the opportunity to give our students this avenue and help and nurture them. So, the first person I'm going to bring up is a January graduate. And although she graduated in January, she was very willing to attend our event, but then read some of her poetry. And she's definitely a young lady that you're going to remember. And you're going to make note of her name because she's going places, and that's Madison Duncan.
Hi. The title of my poem is called "Dear Little Girls of Color." You are not repugnant, nor are you immiscible. You are not a doohickey or a thingymajig, nor are you a doormat. You are a magnificent individual and most people will not get you, but that's okay. Being distinct can be pleasing because many are not like you. Many will not have the courage within you, the confidence within you, the patience, the motivation, the willpower, the dedication, the energy, the mindset, like you. They will not know what it's like being you. They will never understand the rivers you have crossed, the caves you have walked through, or the skies that you flew by to get here. To be in a place where you could let your hair down, even if it's not Malaysian hair, who cares? Your hair is full of wonders. Your curls may be defined or not defined. You may or may not have blue, hazel, or green eyes. You may be a blonde, a brunette, or even a redhead. But being black does not represent the black crayon that sits in the box. Your black can be a shade of moka, caramel, chocolate, and for my lighter ones, a hint of vanilla. Take bright, take pride in your beauty and own it. Your intellect itself unlocks something more valuable than just being the little girl of color. Never forget who you are by trying to impress the world around you. Trust me, they will not care. To my little girls of color, do not be intimidated by the Goliaths in the world. Hold your head high and show them what a David looks like. The end.
The next student is Maya Mann.
Hi. I'm going to read the title of my poem at the end. Your eyes are deafening. No matter how hard you blink, it can't hide the fear. It makes itself evident and cuts through the silence. Why won't your heart stretch towards the palm of my hand? Life gives you lemons, but tell me, but tell me why don't your words have a bitter taste? I ask you, why do you intend to burn my history? You claim that the flames will allow me for once to sparkle. Ancestors intertwine with the wind and whisper that my skin already has a sparkle. Is it sad what connects with the brown people of my past and I is fear, tragedy, and bodies both buried in history? Stories currently contain any joy. I apologize that bedtime stories are filled with silence. Broken salty tears is all I can taste when I think of anguished brothers and sisters in Selma, hand and hem. I ask you, will you take my hand? We can try to unite, a love that will blind ignorance from a simple sparkle. New words of happiness bubble up. I adore this new taste. But I do fear, will our differences transform into silence? The past seems to replay. I'm starting to doubt there will be no difference in our history. Will these scissors cut out a part of my history? Three A, B, and C coils lay within my hand. I stare back at my melanated reflection in silence. Reverberations run rampant in my mind. My grandmother said she'll muster up money to have my hair straightened so I could finally sparkle. I begin to fear, is acid rain and self-hatred the only thing little black flowers taste? Tell me, how does this taste? The salt that should have been sugar sprinkled in history? Amazing how even one over-seasoned fear can last through generation. God bless the hand that prepared this meal with competence. You made prejudice sparkle. Dinner table conversations with America and I are filled with an awkward silence. I fight the idea that black girls are allowed with a moral combat strength by sitting in silence. I can taste the words of unspoken thoughts and ideas that would make me shine and sparkle. But I'd rather not be a part of a negative stereotypical history. Even if you see white when you turn over your hand, you could never seem to see your true color. Is it me or judgment that I fear? It seems silence is the right way to discuss history, but this unsettling taste I cannot settle for. So, I raise my hand under the spark glow of the sunlight. America, is it you or I that I should fear? An unsent letter to America.
Aren't these students amazing? And that was just a taste of what we heard on in February. And it was an honor to partner with Mrs. Monroe. And we are looking forward to next year. Thank you.
Let me say this while we're going around for the picture. You all know I pastored in Harlem for seven years and we were very much involved in the arts there in Harlem. We had the only, my church had the only black box theater currently that was in the area at that time, 70-seat black box theater. And one of the things that we did was poetry cafes with young people like yourself from all over New York City, from New Jersey, some came even from DC on up. And I want to tell you, you are tremendous. You've done a wonderful job. Everybody was clapping their hands, but what they do in the poetry scene, if you didn't see, is we snap. That's in the poetry. So, let's give them an ovation. If you can do it, give them, that's an ovation. That's a poetry cafe ovation. Good job.
And one more thing. I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that with all the different things that are going on in a lot of different schools and the things that we're talking about for our children, with our school being so diverse, I believe that this is one of the best things that we could possibly do for our children, is make sure that we're setting aside time to hear their thoughts. And this is so important. And I'm so thankful that you have given us the chance to hear your thoughts.
It's been many, many years. I used to do, we used to do a big one. I mean, we'd pack in, in our fellowship hall, we would pack in about 150, 150 people. Poets were traveling from like as far as DC to come up to.
Well, maybe we should say about it starting up again.
You know, I never did it up here. I only did it in Harlem. But I probably did, probably.
Now, before we go on to our next very special recognition, I have one special announcement to make, that Bishop Williams has been nominated to be Vice President, well, Second Vice President of the Orange Old Street Bosse's School Board Association, which is comprised of 17 districts, if I'm not mistaken. So, congratulations, Bishop Williams.
Thank you.
Now, last, but most definitely not least, last evening, Bishop Williams, Kevin Gomez, who unfortunately is tied up, he's an attorney tied up in New York City in a court case, and myself, attended STEM Night, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. And we have with us this evening Norville Connell, who organized and coordinated this. And believe me, this was a tour de force of technology. I've asked the fellows, the people, to put that on our screen, just to show the variety. And my heavens, if anybody thinks that we don't have special programs in Middletown, I'm going to tell you, you're wrong. I mean, there was everything there, Cisco Academy, 3D printing, graphic design, video production, somebody was dissecting a cow's heart, forensics, game design, robotics, interactive biomedical, women in STEM, and so on. Norville and Tracy, do you want to come on up to the mic and say a few words? And you know, we cannot, we, by law, we are not allowed to advocate for the budget. But I'm telling you, we want programs such as this to continue. We want the students who are now in middle school and elementary school to have the same opportunity as our students in high school and then some have today. The super courses, the technology, the Cisco Academy, on, on, and on. The college catalog, I don't have one here, but the high school catalog reminds me of a college catalog. And I don't think that some of the college catalogs are as extensive as your high school catalog. So, thank you. So, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, President Perino, members of the board. It was an amazing night. We, I cannot thank Norville and our teachers enough and our students. We had several displays. We had students that were very focused at really presenting themselves as our dozens of technologies and math and science, if you will. They engaged several hundred members of our community, parents and students. It was a packed night. And again, I cannot thank Norville and the staff enough. I'd like to allow Norville to come up and give you the real intricate details of our event. So, again, thank you, Norville.
Mr. Perino, members of the board, thank you so much. One of the things that's amazing about the STEM program in Middletown is the fact that the students are actually taking raw materials and they're building, innovating and creating things that's solving real-world problems. And that's what was exciting about it, because everything that you saw was a solution to something, to some problem that somebody has faced in life. And if we can prepare all of our students to be able to take raw materials, put them together to solve real solutions, then we're preparing them to survive in this life. Not only to survive, but to become leaders. And that's what this program is all about. But we couldn't do it without the amazing staff, because these teachers were spectacular. They are spectacular. The work that they do day in and day out. And this is just a small image of what they do. Because just to see what takes place in the classroom, the collaboration that takes place, the discussion, the debates and the arguments, and the misfixes and all different reiterations that they do, those were the exciting parts. So, to see that take in place, and I remember walking with Mr. Williams through one of the biomed program. And Mr. Williams fell right into the groove. I mean, he got so carried away into the entire, just the development of the argument and the things that his students were talking about. It is amazing. And it tells you that education works, that it opens doors for everybody. So, thank you guys so much for supporting the STEM program, because we are doing, we're making a difference in the lives of children and family. And I really believe it, that our children will change, will make a difference in this community. So, thank you so much for supporting STEM.
Thank you for doing this. You know, I, when I go to these events, I make it a point to speak to parents and students. And the aspirations of these students who are taking those courses, a number of them want to go into the medical field as doctors or in the forensic field, computer field, engineering field, and so on. So, and the professionalism of the students last evening was just totally amazing. They looked professional and they acted professional. And we had the exotic and mundane. And this is a plant, this is, I was given this and I said I was going to bring it to the board meeting. Amy Lewis grows plants and I guess she takes care of the garden in the, at the high school, which is always a good thing to get students involved in it. And so, she was telling me about how they use hydroponics and so on to grow plants as well as, these were going from seed. Now, when you see Amy tomorrow, I knew a little bit more than I indicated. I started working on a farm when I was 12 years old at the black dirt. They didn't have those labor laws as today, Bates's Black Dirt. And with the basil, you have to, it's good to clip the end off here because it goes to seed and that's not good because a plant now will be able to develop well. So, tell Amy that she should remember this. So, so, thank you, thank you very, thanks you very much for being here and thank you for what you do, Tracy and Norville, in the district. Now, we come to the first opportunity for the public to address the board. Any takers? Recognitions, okay. We're going to go around for recognitions. Mrs. Tobiasin, you want to start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Perino. I had the wonderful opportunity last Saturday to attend the Elementary School, All County Music Festivity that was held in Warwick. Eighteen school districts, students came together. They didn't know one another, but they came together. The band was absolutely astonishing. The last piece that they played was the Stars and Stripes. And if it didn't move you, it, there was something then missing or lacking because it was phenomenal. And then the chorus. And again, we had 18 school districts. These kids did not know one another. They practiced until 6, 7 o'clock this past week. And it was one voice singing, again, a very, very moving. Kudos to everyone involved, to our own musical, Tony Di Pasqual. Phenomenal. My last thing is that next Saturday at Monhegan, and I'm not exactly sure of the time, because I was told it started at 1:00. The Monhegan School is putting on the production. The Monhegan School is putting on the production of The Wiz. I'm not sure if it's at 12:30 or 1:00, so maybe we can get a clarification. On their cali, on the calendar, it says 12:30?
One o'clock and seven o'clock.
Okay, 1:00 and 7:00. So they might want to correct their school, the, the school calendar, because that's where I looked at it. So it's 1:00 and 7:00. And you can see, again, another astonishing production by our students. I know the one at the, the high school was phenomenal, and I know the one at Twin Towers, again. The accolades that I heard with regards to the student productions says it all. Thank you, Mr. Perino.
Thank you, Mrs. Tobiasin. Mrs. Knapp, you want to talk about your plant sale maybe a little bit?
Next Friday, the 11th, is the, once again, the track plant sale for Mother's Day. There's orders, an email was sent out, so if anybody is interested, they can order online, or take the form up and call one of the track coaches, or myself, or Sandy Hipson on the bottom. We'll be delivering the plants to the different schools in the morning, and then we will have plants for sale from 10 to 2:00 outside the high school door. So, always are beautiful plants. And anybody interested, just let us know. $15 for hanging plants, $20 for patios, which are nice patio plants. They're good size and they look well.
Thank you, Mrs. Knapp. You know, Mrs. Knapp is, for the year, she's taken a year off from the board, she said, but I tell you, I can't think of anyone who does more than Mrs. Knapp for the district on this board. She not only runs the plant sale, and, but she also organizes and runs the concession stand, Linda Knapp concession stand. And you know, that is more than just being at the concession stand, which I guarantee you is, is enough. But she gets the supplies in, she goes shopping, on, on, and on, so.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that. Because the day after the plant sale is the Midi Invite. We have 18 teams coming, track teams coming from different areas all around, so.
Can't hear me? So if anybody wants to see some good track competition, that's definitely a day to go to. It runs from like 9:00 in the morning till probably about 4:00 or 5:00. Hopefully, the weather's good. And we make breakfast, we make everything we need to eat. So come, bring your appetites and watch some good, good, excellent track members. So that's on Saturday. And then Sunday, we're all going to claps and relax.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mrs. Knapp. Mrs. Zucks will start around there.
So, thank, thank you, Mr. Perino, President Perino. I wanted to start with, STEM Night was really, it was wonderful. It was so big, really big. There was so much to see, a lot to see. And when I say that is because I haven't seen so much. I, I was, it was, yes. When I, for, for me, doing STEM Night, I've always done the PTO, and then I would bring my table, and it was just right there in front of the gyms. And it was just this little hallway, and they were just right there inside the gym. And this was upstairs, they had it outside. It was, it was so nice. And there was so much, and the kids were dressed so nice and well spoken. They could tell you, I mean, not that they weren't before, but this, they were really good. I was impressed. So, I just wanted to definitely go over that. That was really good. And then I want to impress again that we are getting closer to the end of the year, and we need to make sure that we're supporting the all-night grad party, and to make sure that you're dialing in with the high school PTO. If you're with the high school, and if you're getting ready to go into the high school, and you're having a little bit of free time, to please contact Tamika Charles. And that's about it.
Thank you, Mrs. Zucks. And again, thank you for coordinating the poetry readings this evening. Excellent idea. Mrs. Blumenauer.
So the, the morning of the prom spectacular at the temple, I don't know how many of you know this, but I act as the leader at that organization. I got a phone call at 9:30 in the morning that the door wasn't open. And so, I have a key, thankfully. And Josephine and Ed were there when I got there, got there, you know, within 10 minutes or so. And I opened the door, and, and an army of vendors came in, and just, it really was, just went to work like that and got it together. And, and I was there and helping, and we had a whole big committee of staff, committee of volunteers who helped. Our congregants actually were the, who set up and tore down and provided lunch, and, and it was great. And what I, what I, and I was there, of course, helping out as well, but, you know, not to the level of an organization that, that Ed and Josephine did. But what was amazing was just to see the, the kids come in. And it felt, it really felt so good to know that our, our kids, our Middletown kids, for me, it felt good. I say it from a personal standpoint, you know, that our kids were able to walk in, everything was so beautifully displayed that they could, they went and had privacy in a dressing area, and they could find what they needed and what they wanted. It went all week, it just wasn't one day. So, over the course of the week, so many dresses and suits were, were given away. And it was all free. And it just really, just felt so good to be a part of that. And I think that, for me, that synergy of community and school is so important, and I look forward to seeing all of our, it's so nice that we were part of that, and, and just to be able to continue that. So, thank you. Glad we were able to participate together, work together, and, and just take care of our kids, which is what we're here for.
Thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Blumenauer. And you know, I'm very gratified this year that our religious institutions in town have really been doing a fantastic job. We've just heard from Mr. and Mrs. Bloomfield from Temple Sinai in Paula, the Methodist Church, the Backpack No Kid Hungry Program, that's the station there, and also coordinating Pastor Raul, the March Against Violence, Mark Carmel Church, supporting the Backpack Program with donations. So, really, everybody is, is stepping in to make our community just a bit better. And we had the depuse here tonight, and that's another indication that our community is, is getting better and continuing on the line, along that line. Mr. Crescendo.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Perino, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Pastor Williams.
I don't, I don't really have much. I just want to say, there's so much, at this stage of the year, there is so much going on, that I don't even think that any of us will be able to cover all of the events that are coming up, and even that are currently happening. But just, for everyone, just please, go into the website, go to the website, to the district website. The announcements of everything that's going on is, are there on the website, Facebook, every place, you can find out what's happening in Middletown, in Middletown City School District. And, and not just the city school district, but there are so many wonderful things that's going on in the community. And, and Mr. Perino said it, just said it, that right now, we have such, such great collaborative efforts going on between so many different segments of the community, that it just makes me proud, once again, to be a part of Middletown. And I'm excited about our future. Community includes all of us, no matter, and I say this all the time, no matter what our background is, no matter where we come from, no matter what you believe, community is all of us together, and we're stronger together. So, just take note of that. Let's get involved, let's, let's, let's get involved, let's be concerned for one another, and let's continue to do what we're doing. Thank you.
Well said, Bishop Williams, well said. I just have a, just a couple of things here. Our, members of our music department, a couple of weeks ago competed in the state of Florida, and maybe at the next meeting, we can have some of them in attendance. I just want to read the, what Mr. Bennett, who was involved in this, and who was, who was in Florida with our groups, wrote to Kevin Witt. And here it is. "I just wanted to forward a message to you in order to inform you of our competition results from this past weekend. The student members of the Chamber Singers, Women's Quarrel, and Pipers received superior ratings across the board. In addition, Chamber Singers received the festival Disney quote Mickey Award for being best in class over all other participating ensembles in the mixed chorus division. We packed a lot of ti, a lot to our time away and were able to visit the Magic Kingdom on Friday and Epic Typhoon Lagoon on Saturday. I'm sure the entire school community will rally to support all of us, and a hearty congratulations to the 43 students, participants, who represented themselves. And our school district did the very best of their abilities, and a shout out to Greg Bennett and all those students who represented the district." Just another example of the fine programs we have in Middletown. Bishop Williams mentioned collaboration, and the Elks, Middletown Elks Lodge, about a, a week or so ago, put on a dinner for those students who helped the Elks in some of their endeavors the past year, such as the Honor Flight, the Pancake Breakfast, and so on. And the money raised for, in this, is funneled back into the community, and much of it to scholarships for our students. And I have to thank some of the instructors who were there, Dana Guadarramas, Gina Churns, and Michelle Iber for attending, and for Chef Kenny Vernoy and John Egan and exhausted ruler Sal Chula for organizing the event. Also, the PTA's, the PTO's have been very, very active in this district. Past Saturday, the Maple Hill PTO put on the 5K Color Race. In addition, there was a Zumba event, there were vendors there, it was, it was a nice day and a nice time. And also, shout out to the Carter PTO for their successful tricky trade. They raised a good deal of money, and that goes back again to the students. So, with that, we can go on to the next statement, the next segment, which is Opportunities to Address the Board. No, anything, any takers? Now, the next segment is the letters. Do we have any letters this evening? Okay. Go ahead, Mrs. Clark.
She comes to the microphone.
You want to, yeah, get right to the mic and, does she want to go up to the podium? Oh, okay. I didn't think so.
The first letter is from Congressman Sean Patrick Maloney. "Mr. Perino, I write in reference to the School Resource Officer Program being proposed by the enlarged city school district of Middletown. As you know, gun safety remains a top priority across all levels of government. Unfortunately, no one is immune to the tragedies gun violence continues to inflict across the country. It is my belief that we need to continually work to implement best practices that will keep our students and their families safe. Your proposal and your partnership with both the city of Middletown and town of Walkhill highlights how we can continue to collaboratively address this concern. Your efforts on behalf of the Middletown School District serves as a model for communities across the Hudson Valley. As your representative in Congress, I want you to know that I fully support your endeavor and stand ready to assist in whatever way I appropriately can. Therefore, I ask the Middletown School Board to give its full and fair consideration to this request. Thank you in advance for your time and effort in this regard, as both are greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Sean Patrick Maloney."
I think our whole board, and as I told, the congressman's offer is behind this. I believe the, the resolution, I made the original resolution, and Mrs. Blumenauer was second on that resolution. So hopefully, we'll, if the budget passes, and I can advocate for it, we will have school resource officers in each building. Thank you. The second letter, go ahead.
The second letter is from Holly Fitzgerald. "Mr. Delmoreo and members of the board, I wanted to send a note of gratitude for all the support and outreach I've received from the Middletown staff and community over the last year and a half. I have been a PE teacher at Maple Hill and coached for the swimming and softball programs since 2009. I also serve as an engineer officer in the Army Reserve. My unit was called to active duty, and I recently completed a year-long deployment to the Middle East. Everyone in Middletown was extremely helpful last fall in preparing for my departure, as I was constantly put on orders to get my unit out of the door. My colleagues from Maple Hill sent multiple care packages, and I was overjoyed to cover the walls with artwork and letters from my students. My position in the Army was very demanding and stressful, so sometimes, seeing those letters was the only thing that brightened my day. Now that I've returned to the States, the Middletown staff has been making my transition back to civilian life very painless. I'd especially like to thank David Coats, Suzanne Driscoll, Zigna Wiki, Lynette Chalino, Francis Mortolero, and the staff at Maple Hill for being very communicative and receptive regarding my reinstatement. I am so grateful to be a part of such a supportive environment. As a Middletown graduate, resident, and employee, I am proud to call this community my home. I cannot wait to return to work and be Miss Fitzgerald again. With Midi Pride, Holly Fitzgerald."
Thank you, Mrs. Clark, and I'm sure all of members of the board thank Mrs. Holly Fitzgerald for all her service in, not only to the school district, but to the country in the, in her service. So, thank you for reading that this evening. Onto Personnel Action Items. If, if there's no objection, we will approve Personnel Memorandums 22A, 22B, 22C, 22D. And we have these, of course, on board docs over a week before we come to the table. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
One second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Now, under the Superintendent's Report this evening, I take it there's no introduction of personnel, because I don't see anybody here. We have District Superintendent Dr. William Heck here, and he's going to talk a bit about the Boces budget, and about Boces services to the district. Bill, thank you for being here. Would you like to come on up to the mic?
First of all, Mr. Perino and board, thank you for the opportunity to, to address you this evening. My report is, is really going to be geared toward Middletown with regard to, we heard collaborations, ways that we are collaborating with the Middletown School District. And just, may I say, just the students, the adults that were honored here this evening, it was just, I found it to be very inspiring, and, and it was something the community should be very proud of. I welled up, just based on, on the poetry that I heard this evening. It's, those are talented, talented students. So congratulations to you. I'm going to follow up on the STEM, your presentation last evening. Part of my job as District Superintendent is to work at the state level with regard to curriculum and instruction. And I sit on a District Superintendent and lead that group, that committee, in terms of the curriculum and instruction at the state level. And one of the things that we talk about at the state level is project-based learning. And that has become a big piece of the forefront at the state level. And what you've done here with regard to the makerspaces that have been created, and And what you've done here with regard to the maker spaces that have been created and the projects that you've done, that's truly project-based learning. And you are an exemplar with regard to what the state is talking about. So we certainly, Middletown gets it and we certainly appreciate that as well. So I know Pastor Williams, you talked about it last night at the Orange County School Boards Association meeting, the fact that you couldn't attend the whole evening here, but you came, and so we certainly appreciate what you were able to share at that meeting last night as well. You may recall, earlier in the fall, was the NISBA Convention, it was held in Lake Placid. And, and one of the presentations that was done at that convention was a collaboration between Middletown and Orange Ulster BOCES with regard to the Newcomer Program. The Newcomer, yeah, the Newcomer Program began as discussion around the superintendent's tables. And it was brought by Dr. Eastwood and discussion occurred, and then Linda Brant and, and my Director of Special Education, Carrie Stroka, planned how that could happen. And I will tell you that it is one program throughout the state. I'm not aware of any other BOCES that are able to offer in collaboration with, with components, a Newcomer Program. So that's something that has, has grown at the Arden Hill Campus. Middletown continues to offer programs for your students through this program. It's, it's a fluid program in that students are there for a number of months, a year, and then return to district. So those numbers change over time. But that's something that we certainly appreciate, our collaboration with the Middletown School District. Another partnership that we talk about is through the Truman Moon Building. For many years, we were looking for the opportunity to land our Adult Education, our Adult and Continual Education Program, because they were moving from place to place. And they're now in the Truman Moon Building. And programs have begun to grow there, and some of the programs I'll share with you. We have ESL programs that are offered there, High School Equivalency, Certified Nursing Assistant, Philobotomy, Medical Assistant, EKG Technician, Summer Youth Employment, Literacy Zone for Middletown Families. And it wouldn't be possible without the, the agreement that we have with you and, and your willingness to let us use that space through, through that lease. So that's another area that we're, we're partnering and we certainly appreciate that. I talked about my role, you know, in project-based learning. One of the things that we also do is work with the districts to offer programs where we recognize students. On April 26th, OU BOCES held the Humanities Awards Breakfast. And Samuel Johnson and Laura Vargas were honored, two students from, from Middletown. We heard their bios and they're truly outstanding individuals, very much like the students we heard from this evening. So that's something that I wanted to share with you as well. And moving on, there are other things that we've done over the last couple of weeks and, and we've reported out to boards as well as board members with regard to how BOCES is doing with regard to some of the programs. We're just like you. We are evaluated based on a report card, and that's something that I share with my board on, on a regular basis. Just based on their report card, it's, it's, it's good to know that Orange Ulster BOCES in terms of enrollment right now, in career and technical education programs, is ranked fourth largest in the state comparatively. There's 37 BOCES. We're third largest enrollment in special education statewide. And, and we continue to meet the challenges that the students bring to us each, each and every day. New to our career tech programs, these are things that have been put in place over the last several years. We have an animal science program, a pharmacy tech program that's growing, a medical administrative assistant. And new for next year, we're in the planning process for a dental assistant program, which will be part of the 18, 19 offerings. So we're looking for that to grow as well. And that comes through the support of the districts and came through discussion at the district's level as well, around the administrative tables. Currently, one of the things that we've begun to offer is a printing service. This evening, you saw copies of your budget brochure. Those are things that we're looking to do in the future. We did one for the district this year. We're working on another one for them. And that's something that we're able to do as well for, for our component districts. So the result of all that is us coming together, working with the districts and, and meeting the needs of, of each of the districts as they bring it to the table. One of the things that I also want to do before I take some questions, I'd like to take the opportunity to invite you, it was, and I think Pastor Williams may mention this tonight, but the, the annual Orange County School Boards Association, their meeting, annual meeting is scheduled for June 26th. And we have special guests coming. Regent Judith Johnson will be there, as well as Chancellor Betty Rosa. They have been to your district several times, very much supportive. So I invite the board members and just remind them, Pastor, about that, that meeting on the 26th. But, you know, it's something that you should be proud of in that they speak highly at the state level of things that are happening within the, the Middletown District. And Chancellor Rosa and, and Regent Johnson use you as a, as a, as a model. So something to be proud of. And that's something that makes me proud, the fact that I can sit back and just smile about it. So that's really my report for this evening.
June 6th.
June 6th.
You said June 26th.
That would be graduation probably, June 6th. So I'm glad you were paying attention at the meeting. So if you have questions for me, again, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to address you. And at any time, I mean, if the board has questions with regard to anything, simply ask Mr. Delmore and we can set up a time for me to come speak to you at a board meeting. Again, it was, it was just inspiring to hear what happens within your district. And again, thank you for the opportunity to, to address you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Heck, for being here this evening. And I'll go around for questions. Let's start with Mrs. Knapp. Mrs. Tobiasin.
A few years back, you initiated, and thank you for your presentation first.
No, you're welcome.
A few years back, you initiated where you had a BOCES board member, visit the districts. And that has kind of, I hate to say it, fall by the wayside. I'm not saying every month, but it certainly was a little bit enlightening to sit here and hear your report, knowing your busy schedule. We can't expect to hear from you. And I know, you know, you can read emails and that, but sometimes in our own busy life, we don't do that. So is there any way that, and even though Bishop Williams is Vice President, I think it's the interaction with the, the academics
Right.
that would be very meaningful both to our public? And if we knew there was some outstanding students, if we could invite those students from our district to a meeting and, and be recognized for that achievement? I think that would be a great bridge.
I would say this, Bishop Williams is the Vice President of Orange County School Boards. So he will hear my reports in front of all the representatives from the component districts around the table once a month. So that's one way. I would agree that we need to look, schedules get in the way, but we need to look at how we can get board members to, to you, or me.
Yeah, I think Martha Bogart was our rep and she came, you know, and as I said, we don't expect it every time, but I, I think it's the excitement of knowing what the kids did, just like we heard tonight. That's, that's the big plus.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I, I think moving forward, I'd like to, you know, certainly, I come to board meetings for whatever, you know, reason. We will look at, and, and our board will sit down and create their schedule to attend board meetings moving forward. So that's something that we will discuss, we have discussed. And one of the things that, you know, we, we will do that as part of a reorg meeting for the coming year. But I would suggest this as well. I mean, I, I welcome the opportunity to come, talk to you in, on evenings like this. My wife might not, but, you know, it's okay, because it's part of the job. And I think it gives me the opportunity to interact with the board, which is important.
Yes.
Part of my role is, is, as a District Superintendent as well, is to do superintendent searches. So oftentimes, I will work with the board throughout the year and oftentimes, sometimes they become my board. I get to know them, I see them on a regular basis through that process. And then when we have our budget presentations, when we come to you, that's another opportunity. It's for you to invite us in to present our budget. If, if you're not going to make our annual meeting, that's, that's fine too. We'll come to you. We'll make that time to come. Because I think it's important that we have those conversations. Because we are doing so many positive things, so many great things together, from Truman Moon to the Newcomer Program to, you know, who knows what, you know, what the future brings with that. And you're doing a lot of great things here that are being talked about at the state level and, and in terms of curriculum instruction and the things that are happening. So those are things that we can share. And I shared with you some of the new programs and what's, what we're looking forward to for next year. Those are conversations we can have at points throughout the year as well. But I encourage you to have us come and, and talk about our budget. Generally, that would take place, our, our budget vote is late April. So early April would be the time to, to come and, and talk to you and address any questions that you, that you do have.
See now, I'm dating myself. I remember when Bill Ingalls used to come and address us. So do you remember that, Mr. Perino?
So I would, I would bring Deborah Hapess with me, my finance, my Assistant Superintendent for Finance.
Thank you very much.
No, you're absolutely, absolutely welcome. And if there are any questions after I go, you know, please address them to your superintendent and we'll be happy to, to answer anyone. Now, just so you know, our budget was voted on and the administrative budget was passed last April, so.
I don't have a question, but I have some comments. I worked at Orange Ulster BOCES for 33 years and it was, it was a very good run. And I remember times when our BOCES had unprecedented growth, especially in the Special Education Department.
Sure.
And the programs that were developed there, one shining example was the Strive Program that addressed children deeply within the autism spectrum. They won awards, our supervisor actually traveled to Ireland to do presentations. I know for a fact that some families actually moved into Orange County to get their children in that Strive Program. So, and then in 1980, when they built the Emmanuel Axelrod Special Education Building.
Sure.
That was a time when the, the state dormitory authority wasn't allowing any building going on. They put up a 54 classroom building. So this BOCES has been on the cutting edge for 50 years.
We appreciate that. Every chance I get, you know, I talk about the relationship that we have with our components, you know, certainly the support and the programs that are offered. You know, newcomer is a cutting edge. Some of the other programs that we offer are, are that as well. The aviation is one that is new for us and continues to grow. So we're absolutely proud of that and we can only do it through your support. Mr. Tobiasin, just so, you know, you mentioned our increase. A piece of that certainly is something that we don't have control over and, and that's something that you vote on our administrative budget. And, and based on, you know, based on our retirees, we're the only place that we can budget for those retirees, because programs come and go. So in order to cover those retirees, those retirees are accounted for in our administrative budget. So that has an impact on that administrative budget overall. So that's something that we can, you know, we can certainly talk about in future presentations and show you how that, that plays out, but that, that has a significant piece, a significant impact on our overall budget. When we look at our budget to budget, our administrative budget, without that retiree piece, we're, we're less than 2% of an increase. And then we have to put in, because we have to account for those retirees, to make sure that they are covered in retirement, that's added into that, that administrative budget, which impacts the overall percentage. So I hope that clarifies a little bit for you. I don't have the presentation in front of me, but that, you know, moving forward, we'd be able to address that with you. We're good?
The retiree part, I believe, was more than half the administrative budget.
Oh, easily, easily. We have, we have more and, and more retirees. Just this year alone, I mean, I don't have it in front of me. I certainly, you know, wasn't prepared to talk budget because our budget was passed. But I, I believe it was around 31 new retirees and, and they're over, you know, there's certainly hundreds of retirees that we have to account for. They've been there for many years.
It's always good seeing you. Thanks, thanks for coming.
No, it's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to comment, I have the, I've had the opportunity for the past eight years to run a camp called Kids Connect. And I'm the, I've been the director of that camp for children with disabilities. And that's the, a program that when our children with disabilities are going into their summer programs and then as all schools need to, take a break at the end of August, the Kids Connect Camp has taken over for the two weeks and supplies a, basically a respite program and full camp experience for children. It's held at Brayside Camp and once again will be happening this year. But the beautiful relationship that I have with so, the, the relationships that I've made with so many families that are successful, have successful students in BOCES at the Strive Program. They, you know, they talk about it all the time on the
It's an exceptional program.
Exceptional. And many of their, many of the Strive staff have been my staff, as well as many other. Karen Mann, who's retiring this year from BOCES, and so many other amazing staff members that have worked through BOCES have come and worked for me in, in my camp for those two weeks. And I have to say that every single one is a quality, they are
Appreciate that.
knowledgeable and skilled. They know what they're doing. They, they know how to work with children with disabilities to, you know, when there's, and they work together collaboratively. They're able, they know the children. And so I appreciate the fact that we've been able to partner in that way for so many years. And not only that, the collaboration for Medicaid Service Coordination through Jewish Family Service
Sure.
and transition programs that are so important in watching what's happening there. So thank you. I just want to say thank you also
No, you're more than welcome.
and just acknowledge the teamwork.
We are, we're people business. I mean, we deal with students and people deliver the service. And we have some outstanding people and we have outstanding support from the components in order to do that.
And your, and your administration as well, who helps get the word out and then shares information about staff members who would be perfect. Pilar specifically helped us so many years in getting the word out to families who really needed this support for those two weeks. It's a hard two weeks for families. It is.
Sure. I tell you, I come from a, a component superintendent perspective, so it is, it's truly, it's a special, it's a special feeling to work with those students and to work with the staff.
And I've enjoyed, I've enjoyed the eight years that I have been the director of the camp program. This year, I'm going to be advising. I'm, I'm going to be the, an advisor to the program, just taking a little step back in a new role. But it's been so wonderful to be able to have that resource, BOCES as a resource.
Well, I will share that with the staff, if I can.
Thank you.
So I really don't have a question as much as a comment as everybody else. I've been there recently. I was over there over the summer, just there a few days ago. I did get a chance to take a tour. I was in the engineering side, actually got to speak to Mr. Hopper. Very nice. All your teachers were really nice. Guidance, really nice. I was on the other side, nursing, got to see nursing. Facilities. I, I really enjoy everything. So everything that you're saying, I, I get it and I, I really do appreciate everything that you guys are doing over there.
But I emphasize, we couldn't do that without you and we appreciate it. But I emphasize, we couldn't do that without you, and we appreciate certainly that as well. And I opened up the invitation, if anyone would want to see any one of the facilities, the buildings, we would certainly, we've hosted tours. It may be a while since you've been in the career tech or over at the Arden Hill Campus. We'd be absolutely welcoming and provide you with a tour of that, of those facilities. Okay? You're good? You're good? Congratulations on your vice presidency of Oxba. We're looking forward to leadership.
They sold it real well. Yeah, yeah, good people. It's hard to turn, it's hard to turn down good people.
Couldn't have chose a better man, so we're looking forward to working with you. Thank you. And no, absolutely. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
We just approved the Financial Memorandum Number 24. Approval of Special Service Memorandum Number 21.
Second.
Third.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And again, we have all this backup material at least a week before. Okay, another action item. Motion to approve the CEQA to allow the Town of Waukele Planning Board to be designated as lead agency as presented.
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't know if you want to ask Tom Scott, Mr. Scott, just to comment on any of it. It's in the plans, I guess, with Town of Waukele for subdivision for so many garden apartments.
Would you like to say a few words about that, Tom?
Can I have a quick check?
No, right across, right across from Carter. Distelberger for him.
There's a hotel, a hotel by a quick check.
Hotels, hotels are quick checking.
Yeah.
Yeah. I heard about that.
Good evening. About a week or so ago, we received a notice from the Town of Waukele Planning Board that Mr. Distelberger will be developing the property directly across from William Carter Elementary School. And what this action item is tonight is that we are consenting or supporting the appointment of our declaration of lead agency by the Town of Waukele Planning Board. This is important because we are considered an interested agency, and they will, of course, keep us informed irregardless of whether we, you know, agree to this or not, if we just let it go through. But I think it's important that we do respond, and we're an active participant in looking at this project. The project involves 116 garden apartments, a bank, and a commercial space, probably like a strip mall kind of a building, about 15,000 square feet. Additionally, there's a Dunkin' Donuts approved for that site. So it's going to be a very active, very busy site, probably traffic concerns, as we've already noted, with our, the traffic we generate. So, yeah, I recommend that we approve this, you approve this tonight, and we'll get back to the Town of Waukele.
Thank you, Tom, for being on top of the situation. We discuss this in, we discuss this before an executive session. Next action item, vote. We have to vote on that, okay? Okay, so let's vote on that.
Just vote.
Vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you again, Tom. Motion carries unanimously. Next action item, motion to approve the Memorandum of Agreement with Food Service and Middletown Liaisons, Aides, and Monitors as Presented.
Some move.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion to approve election worker Amber LaFries.
Some move.
Second on that? You got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of a resolution request state and federal funding for school resource officers. Mr. Gomez was going to read this tonight. We've had this in our package, and basically what it is, is a motion to request state and federal funding for school resource officers as presented. May I have a motion to back this? Any say? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I must say that Congressman Maloney's office has really been behind this. They conducted the seminar on gun violence at the high school, and even today, they called me to see if they could do anything else to help us, help us along with this. So again, nice job from that office. Now we come to the second opportunity to address the board. Any takers?
Doctor Johnson.
Okay. Any takers? Second opportunity.
It's unusual for you to be silent.
No takers? Committee reports? Any committee reports? Anything new and compelling for? Go ahead.
Whoops. I'm sorry. So we do have the fair funding, the next committee will be, I gave you the date for the next fair funding meeting.
May 10th.
May 10th. That's
May 10th, Fair Funding Committee at 4:30.
Yes.
Mrs. Zucks is a member, and another member was Mrs. Johnson, who was here this evening, along with Kevin Gomez, who chairs the committee.
I'm sorry, I was supposed to definitely mention that we're having that, because we're supposed to be coming to a real resolution and be bringing you something for the end of the year.
It's good to keep this up. It's not a, it's something that should go on year-round, really, you doing this. So thank you. Any other committee reports?
The Oxba meeting, just real quick, an Oxba meeting last night was actually quite good. And I don't have, I don't have, I don't have my paper with me, but there were some attorneys that were there that were speaking about free speech in the schools, and especially in light of all the walkouts and the different things that have been transpiring. And after they finished talking about the process and what was legal and what was, what they could do, we were, we as the school district, city, the city of Middletown School District, were right in alignment with everything that they had said. So again, kudos to our administration and to everybody that was involved in the whole process of the student walkout, also the involvement in the March for Alive. Everything was done properly and in order as it always is. And so that was part, that was part of the meeting last night. Outside of that, you heard, you heard Bill talk about, talk about June 6th, the Oxba Dinner, the annual dinner. They'll be doing the final, they'll be doing the final vote on the slate of officers, as well as, you talked about the chancellor, the chancellor being there and our regent being there. So any school board members that desire to go, I think you need to just tell our district clerk and
We have three.
They're encouraging. Three, we got three going so far, so. Good. Good. It's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be a nice night, from what I understand, so I'm excited about it.
Three is good. Okay, any?
Motion to adjourn.
Well, okay, I have one announcement.
No.
Okay, I have one announcement before the motion to adjourn. Next week, no board meeting, but there will be a meet the candidates night here at 6:30 PM, so right here in, right where we are now.
On Thursday.
On Thursday, 6:30 on Thursday, so.
If you have any questions, you can put them on the website.
Andy Warm will be moderator of this, and it should be a nice evening. Any further comments? Motion to adjourn?
To move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for attending the meeting tonight.